Things set up here for our candidate forum should start in about seven minutes, but we're going to go ahead and go live with it. So we can make sure that everything's working tonight. Get this set up here.
He was there. We had three viewers.
We're doing it.
Are you one of them?
Alright.
Yeah, so no.
So that's how you know who the free viewer is.
Maybe it gets me in the last two.
Looks like a good deal.
Steve Brown. This is my brother. I only work. Doesn't see how convenient.
It is.
Good to see you.
Should be interesting.
I'll put it in on.
I had it on.
Yeah, we just started.
Also. Interesting part of mine is we got some questions.
I got some.
The hiss call up the line. I know. And now. Trust me, it was, it was a. Yes. Maybe you want to make it.
I'm not a baker. I mean, certainly. One time I tried to make a red velvet cake pancakes from scratch, they end up looking like slabs of bologna. And really tasty. I got, I got something wrong.
Well, it doesn't, you can add.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for coming out on a Tuesday night. My name is Belle Outwater and I am the manager of the Auburn Public Library. And I also chair the Downtown Development Authority for the City of Auburn. And as such, our local officials are very important to me because I see how hard they work. So it's, it's a great pleasure to me to be able to host events like this and make sure that our community is informed before they vote. And I think that local politics is really important. Because the decisions that you make in that voting booth are sometimes more important than the decision you make for a national election like president. I'm going to introduce our moderator, Power Evans. He is the son of a Barrow County Treasurer, Caroline Power Evans, our magistrate judge. And since she brought him home from the hospital in 1999, he has spent his life living in Barrow County. He is a proud graduate of Winder Bear High School, as I am as well. And a product of the Barrow County school system. He's a senior at UGA and studies cultural science and history. He also serves as a member on the corporate board for Georgia, the Georgia chapter of the U of R Leadership Seminar. Power loves his community and hopes to continue to serve it for many years to come. Take it away.
Thank you, Mrs. Outwater. I want to thank Mrs. Outwater and Auburn Public Library for hosting this event tonight. They hosted a similar event that I got to moderate back in, I believe it was October, to the city council candidates running here in Auburn. And it was just a wonderful event and a wonderful time. And we appreciate all of you coming because like she said, it's very important for us to focus on our local politics. Truly, I mean, national politics is very important, but this is where, this is your home. And you won't, you need to care, you need to care about your home and obviously you do about being here. So thank you all for coming. Would y'all prefer me use?
Yes.
Does that? How's that? How's that?
I think that did it. Alrighty, well, thank you all again for coming. I just want to take a brief moment. I think we would be amiss if we did not recognize some people that are here tonight. Coach Berry's family is here, a beautiful family. And I think we are amiss to not recognize his life or service. Because tonight is about our two candidates here, but it's also about remembering the memory of Coach Berry. He was a wonderful, wonderful man. And he was the model of how to be a public servant. And I think it should be a model, not only for your local politics, but for your national politics as well. We should always strive to be like Coach Berry and strive to fight for what he fought for. So I thank Coach Berry for his service and I thank the Berry's for being here tonight. Alrighty, so continuing on tonight, I want us first to speak to candidates. Thank you both for being here tonight. It is, the highest respect goes out to you because you're putting yourself out here, you're running for office and that takes a lot. It takes a lot of time. It puts a lot of pressure. There are a lot of sleepless nights, a lot of walking, the knock on doors. So kudos to you both for doing that. Tonight, we're going to have a great event. We're going to have 12 questions in total tonight. Nine of the questions were given to the candidates ahead of time and three of them will be ones they've never heard. They'll be split up among the questions. To you all, the audience, we ask that please take the time to listen, form an opinion. And then there will come a time actually at the end where you'll get to ask a question. And I want to explain a little bit about that. So one, if you are going to ask a question, we ask that you ask that question the way that both candidates are able to ask that and that it's not pointed. If I feel it's pointed, I reserve the right to not allow that question to go forward. I also ask another favor as well. If any of you are affiliated with either campaign at all, I ask that you refrain from asking a question. So fairness goes to both of the candidates tonight. With that, we'll begin tonight. Each candidate will get three minutes to answer their question. And so with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Martinelli, you're going to go first for the first question. So tonight, I'm going to ask you, since we are in Auburn tonight, I find this question the best one to go with first. How would you, as a county commissioner, were to foster a better relationship between the municipalities and the county?
First of all, thank you, Power, and thank you for everybody being here. I think I've accomplished this a lot because I've been out in the area and trying to speak to most of the constituents and going through most of the municipalities and speaking to a lot of them. I've probably clocked about a thousand hours and hours that I haven't clocked, so it's pretty exhausting. In doing that, I know that our website is very, very important. So if you look at our website and you're able to take at the links and look at the links and go further and have the point where you can communicate, it really helps with our council meetings. Our council meetings and our meetings and our planning and zoning meetings are very important. And when I become the county commissioner, I want to make sure once a month that I have a place to meet at, either in Wynder or Auburn, where you can come and sit for two or three hours all day long and just tell me how you feel about the community. Tell me what you would like to do about the community and explain to me your needs. But that being said, if everybody could visit all the council meetings and everybody could go to what's on our website for everybody to communicate, it means a lot for each municipality to speak together and come together.
Thank you, Mrs. Martinelli. Mr. Wolf, would you let me repeat the question?
I appreciate it. Once again, I do want to thank you as well for moderating this. I want to thank the Auburn City Library for hosting this event. I want to thank all of you guys for being here. Local politics really is, is the crux of, of the American democracy system. To answer your question regarding working with city councils, I don't think it's a hidden secret that there has been a lot of animosity between the county and some of the cities in Barrow County. And I think one of the ways that we can resolve that divide is to reach out to our counterparts at the city level. One of the things that the county commission does every single year is that they have an annual retreat where they discuss, hey, these are the policies that we as a county commission are going to be focused on in the upcoming year. We can extend that to the city councils. I think that we, as a county commission, should have a retreat with the city councils where we bring them in and we say, hey, what are your guys' plans for this year? What are you all looking at? These are the things that we as a county are looking at. How can we find ways to create synergy around that? And there's always going to be differences, but one of the keys to making sure that we work together is just having that open communication.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Tonight's second question, Mr. Wolf will go first. The question is, do you believe the military is fine where it is? Do we need to continue to lower it or do we need to raise it?
I appreciate that question. If you actually go back and look at the military rate in Barrow County, the military has actually been continuously dropping since at least 2012. And obviously nobody wants to pay taxes. You know, taxes are a bad thing. But taxes are necessary to fund the basic services that we all rely on. And so as our county continues to grow, it's important that we take a look at the military rate and we make sure that as we get that, that tax assessment and we get the initial budget reviews back, we get that rollback military rate, I want to take a look and do a deep dive and say, okay, if we go with the rollback military rates and we roll back the military again, what does that do for our funding versus what would happen if we keep the military rate the same? And again, a military rate just keeps the tax rate the same. Taxes might fluctuate as home values go up and everybody has experienced inflation. So, you know, we're all, nobody's immune to that, neither is the county government. But we have to make sure that we are bringing in enough revenue that as our county continues to grow, we're able to fund the basic services as their demands grow so that they can continue to provide service to the level that we expect.
Just Martinelli? Would you like to answer the question?
No, sir.
Born and raised in Stowe, Georgia, know that our taxes don't want to race and we're getting very high. That's why we moved to Barrow County and we love Barrow County. Being a Republican, a devout Republican, we want our taxes lowered always. And yes, in 2012, our taxes were pretty high and it has been coming down lower and lower and lower. We want to keep passing that on to generations and keep even getting lower. Our school tax is 18 point something percent also. If our school tax is, is that and our county tax is 6.10. Sometimes a school tax can be built differently for people to know that. But in their mortgages, sometimes you just don't know. But lower taxes has to happen. We are the third largest county in the state of Georgia. Oconee, sorry, Jackson being first, Oconee being second. We're the third and this is where everybody wants to move. I know everybody in this room moved here because you wanted lower taxes and you wanted a hometown feeling and you wanted that and grasp it. And we're on the cusp of 316 and 211 and development's coming. And I know that's so important, but we always have to remember too, we have to think about our neighbor. And that is why I'm here. This election is not about me, it is about y'all and your taxes. So yes, I want lower taxes.
And just to, I'll go ahead and say this, just a break. If you do, if either of you need me to repeat the question, I'll be glad to do it, but if not, we'll just kind of keep it going. So next. So the third question tonight would go to Mrs. Martinelli. Mrs. Martinelli, Barrow County is one of the top growth counties in the state. Do you believe that this fast growth is necessary or should we slow down and control our growth a bit?
That's a tough question. We are growing and growing and growing. But if you sit down at some of our city town hall meetings, you will see that we're trying to contain some of this growth. But it's unavoidable. So a bigger issue is our roads. We can keep building and have as much development as we want, but we have to look at our roads. I did a study where in Dunwoody City Council, they have hired a little truck that goes around and actually sits and does the road management and measures your roads. And we need to understand as the development's coming that our roads have to, our roads have to be open and be able to manage it. And our situation with our roads and along with our traffic is, yes, we are going to keep growing, but we have to be, we have to be very mindful of our management. We have to be very mindful of developments and show up at our town hall meetings. Show up at our town hall meetings. In the city Auburn meeting, the Law family came and they said, I love the development going up right beside me. And it's a good development, but the Law family and the developments and the developer came together. But if the road couldn't be fixed, they pulled back. So your voice matters, showing up at these council meetings, your voice matters and you matter. This, 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 this whole race is not about us, it's about y'all. We're in the cusp of, I know y'all remember 124 in Stowe. Have y'all been to 124 in Stowe lately? I'm sure you don't want to drive down that road. But we knew it was coming in Stowe. We have to play, then play defense instead of defense. And we know it's coming and we have to prepare ourselves. And this election is so important with our budgets, it's just about everything.
Mr. Wolf?
Thank you for that question. As you mentioned, Barrow County is fast, is a fast growing county. By some evidence, we are the third fastest, not the third largest, but the third fastest growing county in the state. And growth is a cornerstone of change. And so it's not really a question of whether or not we should slow it down because there's going to be issues with trying to do that. We're going to open ourselves up. If you try to stop growth and anybody who says, hey, we can stop growth, you can't do it. You're going to open up the county to lawsuits. What we can do and what we should do is manage that growth in a smart and responsible way. A key to smart, responsible growth is making sure that as we have new zoning requests coming in for new developments, that they are matched into surrounding area. And as we approve rezoning requests, that the site plans include strict adherence to our zoning guidelines. And I'll give you a couple of examples of this. So right down the street at Carl Cedar and 211, they're trying to approve a rezone that right now is agriculture land. The surrounding neighborhoods are R1, which is considered low density zoning. They want to rezone it to R3, which is high density zoning. And they want to change the future land use map from agricultural, from rural neighborhood to Innovation 316 corridor. Well, if you go and look at the future land use map, Innovation 316 corridor is supposed to be for areas that have direct access to 316. That parcel is four miles away from Innovation 316 corridor by the way the crow flies. That's not direct access to 316. So we've got to look at those items and we've got to take as a commission, we have to take a look and do a deep dive into those proposals. And what are these proposals going to do? What is the effect of this proposal on the county, on the communities nearby? And we have to make sure that they are being approved for those areas so they match the surrounding communities. And again, as I mentioned, the, when you're, when we're approving them, we have to make sure that we're following our Unified Development Code. So for example, some of the communities that we've been approving are, we've been approving as R2, which is medium density. Medium density zoning says that you should have minimum lot sizes of 15,000 square feet. There's been a number of rezone requests that the lot sizes have been significantly smaller, 12,000 square feet, 11,000 square feet. If we don't use the tools that are available to us, like our Unified Development Code, we're going to continue to have out of control growth. If we focus on our and really emphasize strict adherence to our codes, then we can use our code to limit development.
Alright. This next question, pretty simple question after a couple of hardballs. It's simple as it is, what is your favorite thing about Barrow County?
Thank you for that question. One of my favorite things about Barrow County is actually just being able to go out and have fellowship with people. Being able to go to some of our local restaurants and walking in and having people that I've become friends with since moving into the county, coming by and saying hi to me and chatting with them and, hey, how are you doing? I've got people that I'll sometimes run into two, three times in the same day. Just going to different restaurants or going out to the grocery store. And I really like that. I love that small town community feel. My dad lived in North Georgia in Delonica for a number of years and it was the same way. You drove down the street, you got to wave to people. And so I really enjoy that, that small town community feel, that, that neighborly feel. And I think that's something that's really important that we maintain as our county continues to grow and find ways for us to continue that fellowship. Thank you.
Mr. Martinelli?
Thank you.
The thing about, I love about Barrow County is that, you know, the elephant in the room, I am newly amputated as of 2019. And my neighbors came and built ramps at my house. They built ramps, I didn't even know my neighbors, they had a wheelchair there. And there was a special friend in the room that made sure I only had one sheet. This was, this was so heartfelt to me, I was moved. I didn't expect my leg to be amputated. Please know I'm a very healthy person and in doing that, I wanted to give back to my community. I, I, I wanted to visit the courthouse and make sure they have nice bathrooms. I wanted to visit the city council and see what they might need. I wanted, I'm the time of my life where I want to give back to the community and work hard for the community. So in doing that, I love Barrow County. I like my taxes being lower. I like the school system being great. I like that I can go down my neighborhood and my local church. That's why I moved here. Most of us did from Gwinnett and Fulton to Cal and Com. There's 159 counties. There's a million people that live in Gwinnett and more than a million people that live in Fulton. We've got close to maybe 100,000 and we're going to get there and we're going to get there quick. So I love my neighbors. I'm so excited that I was able to fight for my neighbors. When we had our retirement home, thank goodness I wasn't living in Grayson, our four story house, because I couldn't get up there with our wheelchair. Coming home to my, my retirement home, my husband is a retired police officer, my girls are cops. I couldn't believe that, that like my doors were being shaken from a property behind me. And that's how I got involved in politics. I protected the neighborhood. I made sure that that person had to have his license and we shut the wedding venue down. So now we're able to have peace and now our, our community is able to have peace. And I did speak to Coach Berry before he passed and I did ask his permission if I could run. And I do want to step in his legacy and I want us to all come together. We have to play offense instead of defense in the community.
So our fifth question tonight will go to you, Mrs. Martinelli. What are the top three issues you think Barrow County is facing?
Again, one of our top three issues is roads. They're going to be growth, taxes, crime and traffic. All of these issues are extremely, extremely important, but we can't forget our AMTs, our 911. But we can't forget our EMTs, our nine-one-one, and all our service industries too. Um, I've met the Ron Wynderbarrow, uh, president from our hospital. I've spoke to the chief, Chief Williams at our EMT. Um, I will answer some of the budget questions then, but that being said, we are on the cups of, like I said, when I moved to Grayson, Georgia, Oprah Winfrey said, let's all come live in Grayson, Georgia, and everybody did. So Grayson just exploded, but they knew it was coming. So in, in doing that, I do think it's roads, growth, taxes, and crime and our traffic. And we need to have studies. We need to have traffic studies. We need to have crime analysis. And we need to all come together and come to our community meetings so we can all open up about how we feel about our community.
Thank you, Bauer. So the three big things that I see as I've gone out and I've heard as I've gone out and talked to different stakeholders in our community, to business owners, to residents, the three things that I hear as a constant refrain of issues that are facing Barrow County is our growth not matching the characteristics of the surrounding area, the new growth, our infrastructure not being able to keep up with the demands of the new growth. And then third is that loss of the sense of community that I briefly touched on in the previous question. And all three of these can be addressed through smart, responsible growth. I've discussed previously about how, when it comes to growth and matching the characteristics of the area, that as a commission, we have to really take a deep dive into each proposal that is in front of us and how those proposals are going to affect our surrounding communities. We also need to make sure that our growth is matching our, that our infrastructure growth is able to keep up with this new demand. And I'll give you a brief example. Um, a few weeks ago, uh, my sister and I were traveling on Kilcrease Road. We're going across three sixteen, which stopped at the traffic light just after sunset. And I hear some people honk their horn. I see that there's a car that stalled out in the travel lane on three sixteen. And as I'm sitting there watching, I notice that their headlights start to dim and then they eventually go out. So this guy's sitting in the dark on three sixteen in the travel lane. So I immediately call nine-one-one and I'm close enough to the Gwinnett County line which, you know, I got transferred to Gwinnett County and immediately put on hold. So sit there, the light, light turns green, finally go across the light, flip around so I can keep an eye on this driver, tell my sister, get out your phone, look up Barrow County not emergency number and call. Barrow County immediately picked up. So I got on with them, gave them my phone, told them exactly what was going on and said, driver's already called, thank you so much, got off with them. Gwinnett County finally picked up, said, told them exactly where they locate, uh, I said it was Barrow County, but I've already talked to Barrow County on another line. So we're good. Before I could even finish my sentence, they hung up on me. And I thought back a few years ago how I, I had to call for an accident in Atlanta one time and got put on hold. And at that time, I was still living in Gwinnett. And I was so grateful that I lived in Gwinnett because I never got put on hold for nine-one-one. And then, and that moment, I realized that Gwinnett County can become Atlanta. And I don't want to see the same happen to Barrow County. And so it's important that we make sure that our infrastructure, our critical government services are able to keep up with the demand of the new growth.
Question number six, uh, we'll start with you, Mr. Ward. Some people in our community say that we have a traffic problem. What do you think? How would you mitigate those concerns or change the situation?
Well, I don't think there's any question that we have a, uh, traffic problem. Um, but, uh, about a year and a half ago, they finally opened up the, uh, the new IAD, uh, the new eighty-one interchange, the bridge over three sixteen. And if you go out any time of day, just about, except for in the middle of the night, there is traffic on eighty-one. You get stopped at the light at eighty-one and Carl Bethlehem. You get stopped at both lights going across the bridge. You get stopped at the light at the Bethlehem Exchange where the new racetrack's going in. We have to find ways, we have to bring in, um, uh, traffic experts. We have to bring in, uh, traffic engineers to look at those types of interchanges, to, um, to make sure that they're properly timed. We have to make sure that we are properly predicting the growth that is going on in the county, what areas are going to be growing. And one of the things that we really have to do is we have to use our future land use map. The future land use map, the whole purpose of that is for us to be able to plan what is going to happen within the county, what the growth is going to look like, which areas are going to be set aside as rural neighborhood versus suburban neighborhood. And if we're constantly updating that just based on a request from a developer, then that throws our planning completely out. We also need to partner with our, um, we need to work with our partners at both the state and the federal level. Because we can bring in a lot of money from the state and the federal level to help fund those road growth to make sure that our roads are able to support the growth without having to directly affect the taxes of the residents of Barrow County.
Thank you. So how does everybody like Harpens Road now? We just fly down three sixteen. The governor, governor has a plan that we are not to have any lights and that we're not to have any roundabouts, oh, not roundabouts, we're not to have any turnarounds on three sixteen. In doing that, he has a plan. And that's why you see Harpens going into place. And it's supposed to happen all the way down three sixteen and two eleven because of our traffic. But I bet you didn't know, every car accident due to our, um, our sheriff's department, I'm sorry, our, our, our EMT department is five hundred and seventy-six dollars. Every fire is seven hundred and four dollars. If we act, if we excavate the jaws of life, that's fifteen hundred and twenty dollars. A helicopter landing is four hundred and sixty-five dollars. Hazard waste bills between eight hundred to seven thousand dollars. And then our fire trucks are four hundred and sixty-six dollars per engine per hour. In those statistics, you have to sit down and think to yourself, you have to invest in the EMT, fire, nine-one-one. And, and we do have a stellar nine-one-one. I don't know if y'all call nine-one-one, but it's a lot better than Gwinnett, a whole lot better. And we have to invest in that community. But we have to do more traffic studies. We have to sit down and ask ourselves, what kind of traffic studies do we want? Where do we want them? How can we have them? And that's by going to our Barrow County Commissioner meetings and our city council meetings, asking for traffic studies. It's going to happen, it's going to come. So we have to think to ourselves, what developments and smart developments do we want? But please remember that our governor has put in place for three sixteen not to have any lights, not to have any turnarounds, and yes, roundabouts. I know roundabouts are a little bit difficult. I know everybody doesn't like roundabouts, but to the fatality rate with roundabouts and stop signs, you do have to slow down. It's about one-two, one, one point two million dollars to do a roundabout. But I'm sure y'all seen roundabouts. Who in here have, has their roundabouts near their neighborhoods and see that it's working? There's been a lot and it's been working pretty well. You have to slow down. Now, you may go around and around for a minute. You may see your buddy down there going, okay, can you please not? Let's go around and around. But once you get it, it's flowing and it matters. So roundabouts do work and we can work together on this. But they're expensive and it has to be in our budget. Thank you.
All right. Our next question, we'll have you go first. Uh, number seven, uh, what qualifications do you possess that makes you a good candidate for campaigning?
How are you doing, Austin Joe? Um, I want y'all to know I am data-driven. That is what I am. That is what I do for a living. I'm a private investigator. I've been one for a really long time and I am data-driven. I'm going to pull up stats, I'm going to ask questions, and I'm going to read everything. Because it's important, it's my job. And as I said, this, this campaign is not about us. It's about y'all. It's about y'all coming together and understanding about offense and defense. But what makes me a good candidate is I've had some complications in my life and I've had to overcome diversity. My leg, I have, my husband will tell you, I have three now. This is one. So with my leg, I've had to overcome and conquer and understand and read everything, understand. I'm in a time of my life where I can dedicate that time. Family investigations runs all by itself. And with my dog and my kids out of the house, um, I really think with all the hours, and I'm not going to bore you with everybody I've met, who I've talked to and how many places I've been to, but it's, but I've worked really, really hard and I'm going to keep working hard. And it's a big part of this, uh, election is working hard and meeting everybody and being compassionate.
Thank you, Bauer. So what makes me qualified for this position is my background. I started off in business management and I'm now a contract attorney. And as a contract attorney, I have to read every single line in a contract, every single provision of a contract. And I have to understand, how is that going to affect my client? How is that going to negatively or positively, positively impact them? That is something, a skill that I believe we need in a commission. We need somebody that can sit there, that can go through each line of a proposal, that can pull them out, that can look, that can say, hey, how is this going to affect our community? How is this one to affect? One of the other key components to be turning is that you have to work with others to reach a mutual understanding. You're not always going to get everything that you want when reviewing a contract. They go back and forth. And being a contract attorney, one of the things I have to be able to do is say, okay, hey, you might not like what we put in here, but we can't really accept what you've proposed as a counter. What if we come back to this instead? And really working to find that middle ground, to find where we can make sure that we have benefit for everybody so that we're, so that nobody is left out. That is a real key component for being a contract attorney and it's a real thing that we need on the county commission. So that we have somebody that can advocate, that can ask those hard-fitting questions and that can look at the proposals and say, hey, what if we do this instead? Because it'll have this positive impact on the community.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. All right. The next question would be the first. If you received a five million dollar grant to use for the county in any way you want, what would you do with it in the last?
Five million sure sounds like a lot of money. Until you give it to the government instead. The, the most important thing that we can do with a, with grant money is making sure that we're first not using it for something that's going to incur long-term liability. What I mean by that is making sure that we don't use it to say, hey, we're going to use this five million dollar grant to go and hire ten more, uh, sheriff's officers. Well, eventually that five million dollar grant is going to dry up. And now the taxpayers are left with that burden without a plan for it. What we can use that five million dollars for, what we should use that five million dollars for is investment in ways that we can expand capacity within our various government, um, offices. So for example, within our court services, we can use that money to have universal e-file. That will expand the capacity without having to expand the labor. It allows residents, it gives them the opportunity, the option to e-file their documents, to e-file court cases. And it relieves some of the pressure off the court clerk staff. So they're able to handle more in a shorter period of time. We can do the same thing with our permitting department. One of the few things that Gwinnett County actually does get right is that you can file for your business licenses online. We need to bring that same technology to Gwinnett, to Barrow County. Now, I want to make sure that Barrow County, you still have that option that you can go in and you can get that face-to-face interaction because for a lot of people, that is important. But if we invest that money, that grant money into those types of technologies, we can expand our capacity as we continue to grow without increasing long-term liabilities.
Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Thank you. I, I loved this question because I, I researched a lot on this question. So I think out of budget, we should do a hundred thousand dollars to spend on our service, on our roads, just like the city council did for Dunwoody. So that's a hundred thousand dollars for our roads. They're doing this in Athens, Florida, County, this week, on Brookhaven, Dunwoody, and it saved them a lot of money. And it's just a hundred thousand dollars out of the five million dollar budget. Secondly, we need a fire station off three sixteen, past three sixteen. And a fire station's pretty expensive. So I've talked to the chief, Chief Williams, and it's two point five million, including staff and engines for a new fire station past three sixteen. We need to invest in our community. It's important. Five hundred thousand of that will expand senior citizen services and program. We really need to care about our elderly, elderly. I, I will say senior, I guess I could be a senior too. But we're in a situation where we have grandchildren here and we have cousins, but we're also bringing our parents here. So we really want to expand that as in, like Dan McGee said, in the senior citizen, there needs to be more programs, more integrated programs, more money with meals and wheels. Uh, I'm not done yet. So also grouping on the green. We did this in Locanville and I know that we have an amphitheater and winder. But grouping on the green at a million dollar budget is like getting together and getting music together and everybody getting together with their businesses. Lastly, we need a new website. Okay, a website is about ten thousand dollars. We need a brand-new website. It needs to be optimized, optimization. And that cost about twelve thousand. Almost done. Three hundred thousand to make our Barrow Green Curve Appeal. Wouldn't you like to see some flowers and a welcome sign? And maybe a little bit more trees when you're coming into Barrow? A little bit more homely with our signs? That's about three hundred thousand. We need two hundred thousand dollars to advance in our nine-one-one call center. You can't put enough money in a nine-one-one call center. You just really can't when you're trying to save a lot. And you can put two hundred thousand in that just to advance. Eighty-nine thousand for two full grant riders. If you knew what it took to be a grant rider, to sit down and give them a salary, we are missing out on so much money for grants. It takes a lot of research time for grants. And those are two positions. And lastly, two hundred thousand dollars for a wonderful courthouse. Our courthouse needs maintenance. It needs great bathrooms. It needs maybe some new harvest. It needs, uh, uh, power washing. But our courthouse needs a, a new curb appeal. Lastly, if there's any money left over, after everything I added up, I would sure like to see us donate any historical landmarks from Barrow County and to repair and model any monuments. We need to grasp that and hold on to that for our, uh, future constituents in our future. It's really important for Barrow.
All right. This next question will start with you. What do you think Barrow's top three priorities should be over the next few years? Bauer?
Going forward?
Yes, uh, what do you think Barrow's top three priorities should be over the next few years?
Our top three priorities for Barrow County would be following our comprehensive plan. We have a comprehensive plan. Um, it was very expensive to, like, this is half of the comprehensive plan. And it was put together and a lot of people came together with this plan. It is on our website. People need to read this and understand that we have planned for some growth and we can't plan for all growth, but it is on the website. That's no more. Number two, I, I know I keep harping about it, but it is roads and taxes. Those are really, really important about our roads. It really is. And probably third is we need to care about our community and come together a little bit more and come together with our theaters and have a hometown feeling like we used to have. And maybe have more festivals and just get together more, anything with communication. We need communication.
Thank you, Bauer. So it goes back to your previous, your earlier question about what are the three biggest, uh, concerns that, um, that we see in Barrow County? And so I, I can go right to those three items. The growth that's not keeping up with the surrounding areas, it's not matching the characteristics of the surrounding areas. Our growth not keeping up with the growth and demand from new Barrow County. And losing that sense of community. And so we need to focus on those things. And, and the reason they keep coming back up is because they are so critical to us. Right? Then, so one of the reasons so many of us love Barrow County is that small-town feel, that sense of community. And we need to make sure that we're preserving that through development as we develop, that we're, uh, we're only bringing in development that matches the characteristics of the surrounding areas, that we're enforcing our current zoning ordinances, that we're finding ways to come together as a community, sustain that sense of community so that we can continue to, as we drive down the street, wave to, uh, wave to other drivers and as we go into the grocery store, see our neighbors and, and know our, and be able to communicate with our neighbors. One of the things that when I was looking to buy a house in Barrow County was the guy next door immediately came up. First time, I mean, I was five feet onto the property and he comes up and he starts introducing himself to me. And I love that. And I want to make sure that we maintain that. And that is something that as we continue to grow, we need to find ways so that we can make sure we're maintaining that sense of community. We make sure that we are providing infrastructure growth for our, um, for our essential services to keep up with the growth and that we're matching the characteristics to the surrounding area.
And Mr. Ward? All right. So our next question will start with you, Mr. Ward. How do you plan to involve residents in the decision-making process in our county?
I appreciate it, Howard. So one of the things that has actually been on my website and on my flyers right from the very beginning of this campaign, as a county commissioner, I want to hold regular as a county commissioner, I want to hold regular informal get-togethers where you, as a resident, can come to me, can bring your questions, can bring your concerns to me. This is actually an idea that I got from my former state House representative, Scott Hilt. He did this all the time. He would, in the middle of the legislative session, he would host coffeehouse get-togethers. And I went and I pushed him hard on a few things. I said, hey, why are you doing this, Scott? I disagree with this. Why are you doing this? Why are you pushing this legislation? And he would respond, it was, it was local legislation for the city of Peachtree Corrs. And he was able to give an answer and he said, this is why we're looking at it this way. I can understand, you know, why there might be an issue. Maybe we can look at some other options. And I think that that dialogue is really important. It brings the community in. I don't want you to just feel like the only opportunity you have to address the commission is a short little two-minute snippet while we're all sitting up on a dais. I want you to be able to come. I want you to sit down with us. I want to have that collaborative dialogue. I said, that's something that's important as a contract attorney, so we can find a mutual ground. There's going to be things that you're going to tell me that I, that I'm not necessarily going to be happy without, that I may be doing something wrong, that I may need to adjust. And there might be certain things that I tell you that, you know, maybe not the happiest thing in the world. But through that discussion, through that dialogue, I think that we can really find some common ground and can find some center points.
I'm sorry about the ears.
One thing I think we need to learn is to listen. We need to listen to y'all. We need to listen to your ears and what you have and what you want to focus for. We also need to be creative. Um, I don't know if you know this, but most of the EMTs in fire and most of the city coun, not city council, but the police have a, a Stop the Bleed packet that is in their squad cars or in their EMT. And this was a creative program that was brought through the community. We had to be creative. We can wake up and come to our community meetings and our city council and send emails and open up how we feel. We also have a, a Fire Recovery, USA Emergency Incident Recovery Forecast. I don't know if y'all know this, but when you have a fire at your house, the, the fire department actually has a bill. So in doing that, nobody has billed that bill. And if you add up, and I got a quote from them, $189,000 can go to the fire department because the insurance, they take the money. So we're not billing it. It doesn't come out of our fire. And that's fire with automobile. And, and these are just creative things that we, as laypeople people, we're smart in here. We're entrepreneurs in here. We have ideas. We need to be open and transparent and have an open-door policy, as I do. My number is 404-664-0734. You can call me 24/7. Pick up the phone and let's talk. That's what we need to do. Because I, I know that we don't want to have another snowball at, at 10:30 at night going up and down 124. We can play offense instead of defense, and this is the time. Just like Terry England said, our state representative, and he's tired. He's tired. But in doing that, we can come together, and this is the time that we need to. Go to your city council meetings. You can speak there. I've listened to just about every one of them. Go to your commissioners' meetings. Go to your newspaper. Morgan's here. She writes the best paper. Go to your library. Uh, me and, um, me and my candidate here, we go every Tuesday and flowers mama, and we sit down.
Excuse me, Power, Power's loving?
We sit down. And we drink coffee in the lobby and we have a lot of fun. And doing that, we need to come together and try to focus and listen. We need to listen to y'all. We need to listen.
All right. Our next question will start with you, Ms. Monell. Currently, the county still has ambulances as a part of its emergency services, but it's slowly moving towards privatization. Do you think this is a good idea or should we continue to have ambulances as a part of our emergency services?
This is the most awesomest deal that we could put together to help our community. And I don't know if you know this, okay, but we have partnerships with Northeast Georgia. And in doing that, to help out with EMT, we've done this. We have done a statewide program and the fire report, fire report programs. We have come together with our EMTs, but it's very, very expensive. Now, I don't know if any of y'all made 911 ever or had a response time, but I know that response timing in Gwinnett is the reason why I moved here. Some of us are on blood thinners. Some of us can't wait. In doing that, we need to keep partnership, partnership a lot more. I don't know if you know this, but between July 21st and December 21st, we had over 4,700 calls. 4,700. If we keep going that rate, we're going to have 15,000 calls just with EMT, EMS, fire. And it's just going to keep going. That's why I'm saying we do have to invest in our 911 center. And I'm just letting y'all know that, that this is the best thing we could do. And if you don't understand what we've done with Northeast Georgia and the ambulances and the surface and the services, our fire department, our EMT, our 911, everybody's willing to speak to you because I kind of wonder if I'll answer my questions. But you can go there too. So this is the best partnership. I think the contract has already been signed and we need to keep with Northeast Georgia to help us out in Barrow County.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Mr. Ward?
Thank you, Bauer. So going to the, uh, the initial question here. I think it's a good idea. Saw the proposal. I did have reservations. Prior to entering into this agreement, we had ambulances that ran 24/7. Under the proposal, have four ambulances 24/7 that run 12-hour shifts. So on the face, that looks like a drop in service. But in talking with the, the fire chief, I've understood that what happened, so the way that it had the status of staffing issues and because of cost issues, you had, uh, members of the fire department on the ambulance, on each ambulance. You had two members on each engine or truck. Well, you have to have at least three people to safely operate a truck. So what they had to do was every time you just needed an engine out, you had to send an engine and a medical unit. So that way you could have at least that people. So by doing this, by transitioning over, and actually March 1st is the, the last day, Station 5 is the last one that has, that's, uh, being transferred over on March 1st and then it'll be completely null for the ambulance service. So what they've been able to do is they retain employees. The hospital will staff the employees on the ambulance and they're now able to staff three people, each engine and each truck, which lowers the payments. So they've been able to, to do that. Now, one of the things, as I went through and read the proposal, I was very happy to see that not only did the contract have service-level agreements, meaning that the hospital has to hit certain benchmarks, measurable benchmarks, in order to keep the contract in effect. But one of the other things that Barrow County was very smart about is that Barrow County is actually retaining their EMS zone license. If you don't know how this works, basically the Department of Health is actually the one that's responsible for issuing the license for who's going to operate 911 ambulance service in each area. In Athens Clark County, Athens and Oconee County, they actually have the license owned by the, uh, the two hospitals, Piedmont Athens Regional and St. Mary's. They actually own that license jointly. And Athens has had a real issue lately with their private ambulance service not being able to keep up with demand. They've had really long wait times, um, slow response times. And the problem is, they can't do anything about it. Athens Clark County can't do anything about it. If the Department of Public Health finally says, hey, this ambulance service is not cutting it, the best that Athens Clark County could do is create their own departments and put out to bid, just like any other private ambulance company would do to try to take over 911 ambulance service in that area. Barrow County doesn't have that issue. If at any point in time, either the hospital's not providing the level of service that we expect or the hospital, or we decide to just bring it back to the house, I have to ask you to wrap it up. If you don't mind me finishing one sentence, what he did, so I appreciate it, Howard. We had that ability without issue.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. All righty. So our last, uh, written question here, uh, will go to Mr. Ward first. Uh, it's very simple. It's just, you know, getting to the core of why both of y'all are running. It's simple. It's, uh, why are you running for county commissioner?
Well, like I said, when I was, uh, looking for a home, I was attracted to Barrow County because of the less congestion, lower taxes, and that community feel. I told you all the story of the neighbor coming up, the very first time I stepped foot on that property to walk around. And I love that. I love that sense of community. And after I moved in, I started seeing the rapid growth that we are all experiencing here in Barrow County. I started seeing the rezoning notices. And so I started looking at those rezoning notices and I started digging deep into those proposals. And that's when I started noticing that, some of the discrepancies. Wait, hold on. They're, they're wanting R2. Okay. This area of the county is set aside for suburban neighborhood. That's fine. R2 is fine. But R2 says 15,000 square per minimum lot sizes. R2 says 40-foot lot setbacks on the front yard, 20 on the side yard. Their strip plan is less than that. That means that they're going to have higher density than what R2 is supposed to be. And so I realized that relying on my background in both business management and as a contract attorney, I can be an advocate for our community to make sure that we are really pushing those proposals, that we are really digging in deep and making sure that, hey, is this going to have the best benefit for the county, for the community, for the residents right around this particular development? And to the extent that we have to allow it, so that we don't get sued, are we really doing everything we can to enforce our current zoning ordinances to make sure that this development is going to in fact match what we say we're allowing them to do? And so that is the reason that I've decided to get in this race because I feel that we need a voice on the county commission that's going to listen to the residents, that's going to take the questions to the rest of the commission, that's going to really push the issues.
Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Again, um, I realized, I realized how, how important this race was. And I realized, growing up on mud pies and riding my tricycle bicycle on St. Mary's 124, that had we known about the growth and had we known how we want to keep our community, it's very important. But you have to be vulnerable and you have to be open and you have to listen and you have to go to every meeting. I care about Barrow County. I care a lot about Barrow County. I care about our court systems. I surely care about our police department. I care about everything in the department, everything with the community, and I'm data-driven. And when I say I'm data-driven, I'm going to pull every note. I'm going to make every phone call. I want to question why. I want to ask reasons and I want to understand. But again, this is not about me and, and Alex. Alex, we've been kind of great. I think, and what happened, I know Alex has had a little bit of fun. I'm having fun. I know Howard's sure to have fun. So it's been a great race. I mean, it's been really enjoyable. I know Alex loves politics. I love politics too. My dad was a Vietnam vet. I have a military child myself. I have 64 years of law enforcement in my family and over 25 years of military. In doing that, entrepreneurship really helps too. And our children, our elderly helps too. So in doing that, I just care. And again, if you like my phone number, just let me know.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. All righty. We're going to go into the second half of our program tonight. I just want to remind everybody, so, uh, we'll open up questions to the audience. Um, and I ask that, number one, that you, when you ask your question, that is a question that is able to be answered by both candidates, uh, for all fairness. Uh, and second, if you are in any way, uh, uh, related to, uh, either campaign, if you would please refrain from asking a question in fairness as well. All right, so as of starting now, we take, well, I've got the first one in the back.
I'm going to ask a very selfish question and Howard may tell me that I can't, but I'm going to remind him that I'm the judge of the issue. Stuff might be in the front yard on the way home. Um, the reason I ask a selfish question is because you all both know that I am not in your district, but I am a 28-year employee of Barrow County. And I will tell the audience that both candidates have both reached out to me and both have come to the courthouse to visit, to sit down and ask what concerns. So I really appreciate both of you doing that. With that being said, um, your, your constituents, of course, would be your children. The Barrow County employees are your whiny stepchildren. So that's who I'm representing here tonight, are your whiny stepchildren. And we have some county employees present here tonight. And I don't know if they're in your district or not, but I want to speak on their behalf. My question is, um, as a county, if you are elected as a county commissioner, you will become a fellow county employee. What can you do? What would you do? First of all, to boost morale for the current county employees. But we're losing a lot of county employees going to other counties because they have more competitive, obviously, salary and benefits and those type things. So I'm just wondering, what could you do as a commissioner? What would you do to try to keep people from leaving, good people, leaving Barrow County employment? Because we've got a lot of good people here and we want them to stay. But a lot of people are going to other counties because they have better benefits and better salary and that kind of stuff. So that's the question.
Ms. Ward?
Well, um, Ingraham County, uh, what they, what I realized when I visited over at Barrow County, that there was a lot more stuff, and I think I shared that with the judge and the staff, there was a lot more stuff Ingraham County was doing and a lot more stuff that they could sit down as far as benefits. So there is an Evergreen project going on, I'm pretty sure it's called Evergreen. Sorry if I've misquoted, where they're taking the salaries from different counties to see if it's comparable to our county. And it's really important as, as a commissioner to physically get in my car with one or two on my legs and go to the courthouse and ask them their to-do list. Um, I was quite shocked that there wasn't some credit cards sometimes to be able to drive to some of the places they went, the mileage, and, and, and take data on that, present it back to the commissioners and, and see if we're up to date with our benefits. It's hard to retain a, a, a younger person when we do have great benefits. Therefore, it needs to sit down and we need to compare ourselves, and not just to Gwinnett, maybe to White County, and do a study. I, I promise you, and I, I will tell you, and that was my first stop was the courthouse. I mean, I, I had a wheelchair at Gwinnett County Courthouse, Cadet County Courthouse, Fulton County Courthouse. And in doing that, our courthouse is our main focus of trying to help. And as far as helping retreats and sitting down and comparing numbers and then approaching the city council to see if there's ways we can benefit. And just caring and, and listening and listening to the new developments at the courthouse. Um, you know, uh, taking some of that grant money and asking for a better bathroom. That's what I heard and stuff like that. So to just care and be more compassionate and vulnerable.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Mr. Ward?
Thank you, Howard, and thank you Judge Evans. It's a fantastic question. Uh, the first thing is the county did just approve in the last, um, in the February, uh, January, February, meaning they did approve any market studies so that we can determine where we stand, not just with other counties, but also with the private sector in how competitive we are with pay. And this is something where, as we grow, we have to be smart and responsible in our growth so that we can make sure that we are properly, um, paying and compensating our employees so that we can keep them here. One of the other things that, that's, I know is a big concern as it relates to morale is our current county structure. We are a county manager style of governance, which means the county commission, including the county chairman, are all there just to represent the, uh, the constituents and we set policy. But we have a county manager that is directly responsible for day-to-day operation of the county. The county commission is not responsible for day-to-day operations. So we really need to emphasize putting that, using that structure, allowing the departments to go through the county manager when there's an issue. Not for us to be directly, uh, involved and, and putting pressure onto county employees. That's how you get turnover. When you have a company, and this happens in a company, this happens in government, when you have a company and you've got multiple bosses constantly nagging at you, it lowers morale. It causes you to leave. You want to have, you want to know what my chain of command, who do I go to if I have a problem? And I don't want to have to worry about that person's boss coming down and yelling at me for things that I don't even know what's going on. And so that is one of the big things that I think that we need to do so that we can focus on morale. Because at the end of the day, you lose employees not just from compensation, but from those types of issues, those types of morale issues. And that's where we lose a lot of really good employees. And so it's a, it's really a twofold. Making sure that we're properly compensating and making sure that we're providing a good, healthy work environment that everybody is happy to come into every day.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. That one?
Hi. I've enjoyed this evening. This has been great. Uh, I, since we are in the Terry England expansion of the Upper Public Library, uh, do you have a hometown library and you have a ho, a library card? Bell Kinnick asked that, so I will ask that.
Mr. Ward?
So I'm south of 316. So I'm south of 316. And the only county government service south of 316 is a single fire station. We also have the city of Bethlehem. The city of Bethlehem has a little, little, tiny library that can fit inside of a small coffee shop. So to answer your question directly, unfortunately, no, I do not because I don't have a facility nearby. And one of the things that we do have to consider as the county grows is making sure that we are providing resources, government resources, to all of our residents equally. We have 20,000 to 30,000 residents of approximately 90,000. I can do that math fairly quickly. That's about a third of the Barrow County population living south of 316. And again, the only thing we have on a county level is a single fire station. And if you want to get to a library, you have that one small little room in the city of Bethlehem. So I would like to see ways for us to encourage...
We'll take our next, let's see. I will go right here, and then we'll go to you.
I just have one question, but it's in 28 parts. If anybody gets that reference bonus points, too. I heard, I'm trying to keep this where you both can answer it. But I heard mentioned unplanned growth. We've had a lot of talk about services. But if you're on the commission and you're hearing all the rezoning, and you're making the decisions on growth, do you really believe there is unplanned growth? And if you do, how do you define that?
We have to, as I said, I know it's hard for y'all to find, but we have to keep following a comprehensive plan. It's on the website. But we can veer from that plan, too, as far as maps, just like we have redistricting in District 4. It's going to come. The roll-up project is over probably 200,000 acres plus off 316 that's going to back up to us. The only way to really answer that question is to have somebody on our commission board, like myself, that is data-driven, will ask questions, will ask research. Go out to the property if there's an issue. Go ask the homeowner. Go talk to the community. We have to be open-minded. So yes, we have to work better at that with the community, but I understand with the growth, we do need to look at our comprehensive plan.
Thank you, and thank you for that question. So the concern is that it's, the growth is, as you pointed out, we are approving it. So it is planned growth. But what we're not doing properly is making sure that that growth matches the existing characteristics. So if you go to a county commission meeting or even a zoning and planning meeting, so many of the rezoning requests that come up, whoever it is, the petitioner gets up, they present what their proposal is. You may get some people speaking opposition. The proposer then gets a little bit of time for rebuttal to have any time left. And then most of the time, either the planning committee or the county commission votes and approves it unanimously. And that's the bigger issue, is that we are not looking at those things and saying, wait, hold on, hold on, hold on. This does not match that area. No, wait, we're saying that we wanted it to be medium density here? Well, then, how come their site plan doesn't match the requirements for medium-density development? Those are the areas that we're not doing well. And so, yes, it's planned. It's unplanned in the sense that we're just allowing it to go through unchecked without asking those hard-hitting questions and saying, why does this not match what we say this area should be? Because those are the things we can control, those we should control so that we can manage the growth in a more responsible and smart manner.
I'm interested in, when we talk about growth and services and things of that nature, that if you have growth and everybody can't live in a brand-new starter house or chateau blanc, what will you do as the county commissioner, or would you be in favor of, that supports your low-income tenants, your low-income people? The guy that rides on the garbage truck? If you look at what you pay a deputy sheriff in this county, he can't afford to really live in one of these starter homes, either. And the judge is right. She is the judge at the eviction court. And I've been to her court a lot. I've been a landlord in this county for 35 years. And I used to own one of the largest trailer parks here in Auburn. The people that ride the garbage trucks, your Waffle House waitresses, your ditch diggers, the average working people, they have to have someplace to live that's affordable, right? So you can say you put it in density, right? And I can show you some townhomes and apartments in this county. They're in the, you know, they're in the right zone. I'm self-employed. I own a boat rental company. I can't afford to rent there, right? It costs too much. But you have to have something for these people. And what would you do as county commissioner to address the needs of the working people in this county?
Thank you, and thank you for that question. You're right. We have to have diversity in that growth. And so it's about making sure that we match the characteristics. And of course, right now, starter home prices are through the roof. I know we've got a few real estate agents in here that can vouch for that, that prices, and a lot of that goes back to the housing market and inflation. And there's certain things that we just can't control. Obviously, one of the things that would help is if we can find ways for especially our county employees, being able to better compensate them. But I don't believe that we have to say, no, you can't have that kind of development. No, we're, you know, everybody thinks trailer parks are a negative word. And, you know, that's why everybody, it's referred to now as manufactured homes, right? To try to soften that. And I don't think that we should say, no, we can't, we're not going to allow any of that kind of development in Barrow County. No, we're not going to allow any apartments in Barrow County that would be more affordable for those who are your garbage trash collectors, who work in services, who are your sheriff's deputies. But we just have to make sure that when we do it, we're doing it in a smart, responsible way so that we're making sure that it matches the existing area. We shouldn't throw down a high-density, affordable apartment complex right in the middle of an area that was originally zoned, set aside as rural neighborhood, and that has R1 housing surrounding it. Because if you do that, then you, A, lose some of the characteristics, and B, we're then going away from our future land use map, which again, goes back to, that's what we use for the planning purposes. So we can find those areas where we have the high density, where we can allow that high density, and where we can promote that type of growth.
So I'm going to go on a limb here and have an incident just like with Morgan in the paper. So Morgan wants to move here, and she wants to have a low-income place that she can have, single. And she's been looking for that for a long time, just like 55 and older communities. Coming from a trailer park and raising my son as a sheriff's deputy at $9 an hour and being very familiar with cleaning out trailer parks, growing up, known Charlie a really long time, and understanding that, we do have to be smart and try and pick some of these communities. If you look at the Auburn community, you will see that there are places that they've had these homes. And we just have to speak up and entertain more development and more developers that have that type of homes. In doing that, we have the comprehensive plan, but it's not to say that it can't be veered from. It's not to say that we don't forget about our 55 and older communities. And we do need to think about the single-family, hard-working families. Some of this one is. So I would suggest that we open our mind and be more open to some development that could veer from this plan. This plan is our plan, but it's not the Bible. So we can veer from it. We would have to entertain some of that development, just like we'd entertain some parks, a special needs park coming in. I was in charge of helping the special needs park in Grayson. In doing that, we have more development. So as the need is there, we need to speak up, data-driven, ask, open our mind, show up at meetings, and talk to our mayors, and talk to our constituents, and ask them, how can we bring the developers to our town? All right.
I promise it's not a library question. So there's, just talking on the macro level for both thoughts here. Macro level, there's a SP, I think it's 494, in the Senate bill going right now. And it's about large investment groups that wants to get involved in communities without the commission, cities, you know, the local government having much of a say in decision-making on how developments are happening around here. Any thoughts on a macro level on how to speak to that? Again, we know development's coming, but again, this is some odd Senate bill where it's going to bypass some things that we think are important. So I was curious. Yeah, no local control. Any thoughts on that?
Well, thinking about that with a branch off of the commission plan, not sure to be able to put a citizens group together, but a citizens outreach. In doing that, I want a lot of data to look at it. There could be different programs that could be put together. I'm sure that in an open meeting, that would be something that we could sit and look at because I know as civilians, sitting down and looking at property, it is important. But that's a very good question. The property needs a lot of research.
Well, Judge, I appreciate you asking that question. It's actually a piece of legislation that has come onto my radar and that I've actually briefly looked at. As a, in my core, I'm a small government fiscal conservative. I believe that governance is best when it is derived from the state and more importantly, the local level. In Barrow County, as a county commissioner, we have about 90,000 residents. We have about, we have six county commissioners. That means you have about 15,000 residents per every commissioner. You have a lot more direct say with the people. And so I do have fundamental issues with SP 494 where we are going to lose a lot of our local control. We need to have more control at the local level. And as county commissioner, one of the ways that we can advocate for keeping that control at the local level is to work with our members of the Barrow County Legislative Delegation. In the redistricting, we're going to go from having one, I think, maybe two state House representative districts covering Barrow County. We're going to have three. And we're going to have, I believe, two or three state senate districts. So we're going to have more voices that can speak up for Barrow County. They can say, and that we can go to as a commission and say, hey, this is not for Barrow County. This takes away some of our local control. We don't need this legislation to pass. And we can work with our representatives under the gold dome to make sure that we are passing legislation that is not going to negatively impact our communities and negatively impact the county commission to more actively respond to you as a community.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll leave it at that right there. On the interest of time and interest of the candidates because they've done such a great job tonight, we're just going to have, just have one more question.
My name's Ray. I'm the minister at Listville Christian Church. And so I'm interested in faith community. And I'd like to know how faith has shaped you and some of the core values that you have learned through the years and that you should carry.
Ray, I have a question. I'm actually a member of the Jewish faith. I'm Jewish. I grew up, went to religious school, had my bar mitzvah. I ended up taking a trip to Israel, one of the most heartwarming experiences. When we first made our trip into the old city of Jerusalem, we, as part of the trip, we had a group of Israeli soldiers join us. We had six Israeli soldiers join us. Everybody that was, that was not from Israel, that was in the group, we all walked with our eyes closed to a spot that overlooked the wall. And opening my eyes and seeing that was just such a powerful experience. And then walking to the hotel, the Western Wall, and putting a prayer in the wall was a moving experience for me. And then when I came back stateside a couple of years later, I actually started teaching religious school. And I taught religious school, was a youth advisor. And it was something that was really important to me because my faith is important to me. I love my faith. I love celebrating every Rosh Hashanah. I go out on the back deck, and I'm boiling your rams horn.
It's true. It is true.
So I'm not sure what the neighbors thought of it. So my faith is really important to me. And it's important because it does guide our morals and our principles. It's one of the reasons that I do believe in community and outreach and speaking to people and just living my life as a decent person because that's what's important to me at my core.
I'm so glad you asked this question. I am devout Baptist, born and raised in Stellwood Baptist Church, and the first Baptist church in Winder, of joy. I went on a mission trip, not knowing what I was going to get into. I just wanted to volunteer with Habitat for Humanity of Barrow. I had no clue what we were going to do, but I knew that we were going to meet and be with the most vulnerable sex-trafficking women from the ages of 16 to 22. When we drove to Alabama, and I barely knew any of the people we were going with, I just knew we were some women. We were going to have some time, and we played bingo. We gave them clothes. But 60% of those women were sex-trafficked by their parents. And they came back to us. And I knew in that moment how much I cared to volunteer for this community. And I just loaded up with these women, and I said, please vote for me. And they're like, what are you running for? Not any of them are in our district. But none of that matters. And I apologize if y'all got some mailers and you weren't in my district. I was just told, here's some zip codes in my district. But when we went on that mission trip, I devout to tell them that I'm going to come back. And there was one woman in the room. She was 19 years old, and she had a 10-year-old. And I was wearing this long, black, if you know me, I love black. I always wear a black shirt. And she just loved it so much that at the end, because they get nothing. When they come up to this reservoir,